Six, two thousand and sixteen. Called to order the meeting. In Louisville, we will call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Buddy Templin, Councilman at Large.
Jim Brooks, Council at Large.
Dave Harrison, District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Ed Bell, District Two.
Elizabeth Lamping, District One.
Chris Duffer, District Three.
Kevin Day, District Four.
Thank you, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have, uh, council, three sets of minutes to go through this evening. The first one is dated August the first, two thousand and sixteen. That was amended minutes to include council comments. Floor is open for questions, comments, or any corrections.
On page two, the second, uh, piece there where it says, "Public comments," it says, "Ron Moat and neighbors presented a petition to curb noise pollution." I think that should be curb. And then on, a little bit further down the page where it starts out A, B, C, Ashley Pilan, uh, they left the G off of, off of Grove, there in Beach Grove. And that's all I had.
Any other questions, comments, or corrections? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes with corrections.
Thank you, motion to approve the minutes with corrections.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will, uh, have the minutes corrected and give you a copy at a later date. Counsel, uh, you have before you printed copy of the meeting minutes dated Monday, September the sixth. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections. If there are no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make that motion. A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The last set of minutes this evening, council, is a set of printed minutes dated Monday, September the twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, a special budget meeting. Floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections. If there are no questions, comments, or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as read or as presented.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. This evening, council, uh, we will hear, uh, General Ordinance Number Twenty-two, which is the salary ordinance, on second and third reading, General Ordinance, uh, Number Twenty-three, which is the two thousand and seventeen budget, on second and third reading, and an additional appropriation, uh, as General Ordinance Number Twenty-four. Also, you'll hear a resolution this evening for the DLGF. But before we do that, we will open the floor for public com- uh, comments. So, counselor, if you could, uh, call up who's ever signed up to speak.
Yes, we have six people who have signed up to speak this evening. The first one is Pam Stalard.
Address.
Yep, please state your address.
My name is Pam Stalard. I live at seven eleven Church, Main Avenue, Beach Grove, four six one oh seven. All of a sudden, I've gotten real nervous. I just can't get over that. On this budget situation, I kinda have mixed emotions here. Uh, I believe that some of these positions, uh, should have increases. I don't believe others should. One example is your Clerk Treasurer. Um, that's really two jobs that this person is doing. I think in order to hold down two jobs, it's a full-time position. And in addition to that, he collects sewer money. I asked him if he was one responsible for spending all our sewer money on paving the Little League field, and he denied it. But I think possibly, since he holds down two different jobs, that position might deserve an increase. The mayor's position. Historically, the mayor's position has been a part-time job, not a full-time job. It turned into a full-time job when Mayor Dilt took over from Mayor Wright. He was forced to make it a full-time job to clean up the mess that Mayor Wright left behind. So, he, he had to work that full-time. I don't see now why this has to be a forty-hour-a-week position. Uh, I think twenty hours is adequate. Fifty-two thousand dollars for a part-time position, I think is adequate. For fifty-two thousand dollars, I could drive up and down the streets of Beach Grove and wave at people, too. I would be tickled to death to make that kind of money doing that. Okay, let's move on to the councilmen's positions. The councilmen's positions were created as public service positions with a small stipend. They were not created as part-time jobs for income seekers. These positions have notoriously been positions where you get money for free. You don't have to show up, and you still get paid. You don't have to do anything, and you still get paid. I have heard many comments that this group is different. This group is great. They're really gonna work for ya. Well, they do all seem to be real nice guys. They've only been in office nine months. So far, I've seen the council vote for an increase in permits, which creates a burden on the people. The reason behind that was other cities do it. I don't consider that a plausible reason for putting a burden on the people. Another thing that has just come up within the past few days, I've gotten information that one of our councilmen may have given misinformation to a group of citizens that might be harmful to them. I am trying to investigate that further to see the accuracy of that. But, um, so far, I haven't seen where this council has worked to prove that they deserve an increase. I would like to see an adjustment in how the councilmen are paid, and if they don't show up, just like in the other position. If they don't work, they don't get paid. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam.
Dan Pavy? Please state your address, sir.
My name is Dan Pavy. I live at one thirty-four South Thirteenth Avenue. Good evening, Mayor Buckley, Clerk Treasurer McMillan, Mr. City Attorney, and all honorable council members. Uh, first of all, I appreciate the job that you all do and our police and fire. I feel very safe and secure, and I believe the city is moving forward, and I very much appreciate that. Uh, I, I have, uh, my background, I just retired, uh, three and a half years ago from the city county I worked for, for, of Indianapolis. I worked for Information Service Agency for thirty years. And I have three points. One is, uh, there's been no increases in thirty years plus, I hear. That's ridiculous to me. That's, that's so incredible. And I also understand that, uh, someone has made a comparison to the other, uh, to other third-class town cities, similar size, and I think you should bring that out and say what that is, uh, because I think even with the increases that are coming about, you're still not gonna reach, uh, near the bottom of those. Uh, finally, uh, part of what I did, I had ten years, I served on the Marion County and City of Indianapolis Job Classification and Salary Report. And, um, ten years, and we did lots of studies, and I totally understand how important it is that you make the salaries, you know, to get that increase, because we need you, we need good people, and that's part of what keeps good people. So, once again, I appreciate you all. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rinks, you wanna speak on your topic, right?
Yeah, do you want me to speak now, or do you want, I can defer to citizens first?
Let him defer. Very good. Donald Webb.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, I am not against the idea of a raise, but, uh, the optics of this raise look awful. And why they look awful is I've heard that we're focusing on bringing council pay up and the mayor's pay up to match other cities, uh, because we need good candidates. You all are nine months into the first term, it's five of you are, and two of you are in your second term, and we're worried about election candidates thirty-eight months before an election. Um, if that's the case, this is something that could wait till two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Uh, I look at our school system, sixty-nine percent of the kids are on free or reduced lunch. Beach Grove's lost over two hundred million dollars in assessed value over the last eight years. People in Beach Grove are struggling. They're not getting pay raises. Matter of fact, the income in Beach Grove's dropped six percent over the last eight years. But what hasn't dropped, their sewer bills, their everyday bills, their taxes, all those that stayed the same are going up. And when you ask for the percentages you're asking for, to me, you're, you're telling your neighbors that you deserve more, well, they're the ones who are gonna have to pay it. And thirty thousand, yeah, it's not a lot in this budget, but the optics of it, when you look at our city, which is a lower-income-class city, I mean, ninety percent of our housing's below a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We don't have a lot of expensive housing, we don't have a lot of expensive anything. And, you know, if you look at the salary numbers that I've just done some basic research on, and it could be incorrect, but I think it's pretty close, right now, the mayor and the clerk treasurer make more than fifty-eight percent of the population. With your proposed increase, it'll be more than seventy-two percent of the population. I don't think we need to boost the pay that high and put them out of reach of the average citizen. Council pay, I don't know if it's been thirty years or not, but in nineteen eighty-six, I find it hard to believe that a councilman was getting paid almost thirty-five hundred dollars a year. That'd be equivalent of getting almost ten thousand now, if you look at inflation numbers. Again, I don't oppose a pay raise, but if what we're saying is we wanna find better candidates, fine. Let's go, let's amend this bill tonight, go two percent a year for the next three years, and then have these, these thirty-four and twenty percent pay raises that you're requesting take place January first, two thousand and twenty, when a new mayor, a new city council, and a new clerk treasurer would then be sworn in. But I'll tell you, too, I find the idea that money somehow creates better government laughable. If that's true, why do we have a, a nineteen trillion dollar deficit and a hundred trillion dollars in unfunded liability? Those folks in Washington are some of the best play, paid in the world. And so, the idea of tying money to performance of government, I, I just don't know if that holds true. We're a small city, our employees have to be paid more 'cause they compete with Indianapolis, Lawrence, and Speedway. But again, we don't have the resources that those cities do, and I would hope that you guys would be good stewards and also act morally and ethically. Truth is, we don't need to figure out how to get more money to people, we need to figure out why twenty-one percent of our population is all that bothers to show up and vote for elections. Why are people so disengaged? We, you know, and the other question is, if we don't have, if we need good candidates, what's wrong with the candidates I'm looking at now? You all went canvas neighborhoods, spent your own time, you're on some of your own money, you talked to people, you wanted the job, and, and never, when I've talked to a few of you, I never heard anybody say, "You know, we need more money to do this job." It was about, "I wanna make Beach Grove better," or "I have this idea," or "that idea." You know, me, I volunteered for the RDC. Why? 'Cause I wanted a green way, and I wanted to make sure that money wasn't just given away to businesses, and that the RDC acted in a responsible and transparent way. I'd worked with five other people that take no money and have taken no money. Ron Moat and Kathy Chapel have done this for four years now and not taken a dime, but they have given several hours of their time to the city for free. And, uh, if, if, if money's what people need to do a job effective in government, we've got a lot of boards and commissions that people work on that don't take money for. So again, I am not against a pay raise. I'm against the optics of this pay raise. When I look at my neighbors and my, my fellow citizens and how it will look to them, especially when you're gonna have to, in a few months, explain sewer bills that are going up, possible IPL, and look at the City of Indianapolis, their seventy-five million dollar shortfall, their budget's not in very good shape either, and we could be facing a tax increase of county income in a couple of years, which again, will hurt our residents, 'cause we are part of Marion County. So, I ask you to please reconsider this and just look at the optics, and think about your neighbor who's struggling. Are you gonna really feel comfortable saying, "Hey, I just voted myself a thirty-four percent increase"? Thank you.
Thank you.
Suzie?
First, I wanna thank this council. I do think you're doing a wonderful job. My councilmen would be Jim Brooks, and Buddy Templin, and Chris Duffer, and I appreciate what Chris Duffer did last month. It seems like he's always standing up for the citizen. I wanted to say that. Secondly, I wanted to say that I appreciate the fact that you guys have decided to give these raises. I do think they're deserved. I do think that they should get them, and I appreciate the fact that you don't, you're doing what you think is morally right, instead of doing what a few people on Facebook or a few people think is right. And furthermore, I heard Mr. Webb talk about the Greenway and the city moving forward in positive ways, and that is a wonderful thing. And that Greenway, I understand, I believe I went to the meeting last year, the first portion of it's gonna be about four, five million dollars, and it's a good thing for the city. It's a good thing for the city, but we should not not get it because the citizens don't make that much money here. That, some of his reasoning didn't make any sense to me. So anyway, I just wanted to say, I thank all of you for your service, for your time, for what you're doing, and for standing strong in your beliefs and doing what's right, and not just for the council and the clerk and the mayor, but for all the employees here who very much deserve those raises. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Kim Quick.
Address is one zero zero five Main Street. I really hate to speak publicly, publicly, and I felt this was really important. I don't even, I usually don't even attend the meetings, I listen to 'em, but I felt that this was so important to be here. I feel, at first, when I heard about this, I was against it. I didn't think, nine, nine months, you guys should get an increase. However, I started researching. I researched about twenty ci- twenty third-class cities in Indiana. We are really underpaid. I couldn't believe it. That changed my mind. I believe we had turned down, or voted down, a pay increase about a year or two ago. I didn't research that. Don Webb brought up how much our school makes. Well, look at how much all the administration makes for our schools. They're paid very well, our employees are paid very well. I would like to see our elected officials paid very well, because I expect a lot out of every one of you, and I let you know that, too. You guys should be paid well. You have to deal with difficult people. When you're walking down the street, people stop, and they wanna ask you stuff. You get slammed on Facebook. I'm one of these people that do that all the time, and you guys deserve to have extra I want better leaders in the future. I want better than just average citizens. I want people that are gonna take our city out of the decline that I feel it's in and raise it to something great. I look at what Greenwood's doing, I want our city to do that. I look at surrounding cities, I want our city to do that. I don't want us just to stay how we are or get worse. We have a lot of problems in this city. Maybe the pay was okay back years ago, ten years ago, twenty years, thirty years ago, but we don't have the same problems that we had all those years ago. We have a lot of problems that we have to work on. You guys are all gonna have to put in a lot of hours. I want you guys to meet, do a town hall meeting every six months. I want you guys to be available for citizens if they have questions. I know there's five of you guys that I've asked questions to, and you're not even in my districts, in my district. I just think that we really need to increase the pay, not because of, you guys are, I mean, I'm not saying that you guys have only been here nine mon- nine months, but this should've been done a long time ago. We're lagging in our pay for our elected officials. Also, um, I would like to see in the future an ordinance put in about attendance for our council members. I went back on the last four years' term, and I was disgusted. Four people missed a lot of meetings. Now, Ed Bell and Dave Harrison, in four years, nine months, they've missed one. This council right here, in nine months, only one person has missed once. That's, that's what we need, people that are dedicated to be here. People like that, they deserve to be paid well. And even with the pay crease, increase that we're proposing, it still isn't that well compared to Greenwood, which is just a town or a city, I mean, it's not even a third-class city, I don't believe. That's all. I didn't even prepare a speech, I'm sorry, I'm just nervous, I don't like to speak in public, but it's important that, um, you guys vote this, because I want the future of our city to be better. I would like it to even be more in the future in regards to pay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak before we proceed?
Any, any employee, or employee rep? If you'd like, but you don't have to.
Seems like we were just here a few weeks ago. Wanted to speak about, uh, oh, my name? Nathan Rinks, Union Rep for the Police Department, also a citizen. We wanted to speak about the budget. My department, my guys have some concerns. I've spoken to several of you, I've spoken to the mayor, uh, City Legal, Dan, I know I've spoken to you, I've spoken to you. Uh, Dave, I think we speak, spoke in the last couple of weeks, too, I think. I've been on the phone a lot in the last week. It's been a hard week at our department. We, w- when you looked at the budget, we were told everybody was getting a two percent raise, and it was quite exciting. Everybody was happy about it. And then we come to find out, less than a week later, that the Fire Department is, is getting a significantly higher raise. We don't fault the Fire Department, and we support your raise, and we support everything you guys get. Love you guys. Work with you guys every day. You guys were the first ones there when I broke my leg. I know we've had several other guys and incidents, and you guys have been there right with us. Love you guys to death. So we would never argue against the Fire Department getting a raise. We'd never argue against you guys getting a raise. We believe, too, that in order for the city to continue to move forward and be the best city, and, uh, in an area that attracts people here, that we, we need to be well-paid, and we need to, not well-paid, but we need to be compensated in line with the competition, because we don't always compete with a Jasper, or a Hobart, or other Class III cities. We compete with the cities that are right here, and that's who we have to worry about, Lawrence, Noblesville, Westfield, Greenwood. So we would never fault anyone for getting a raise or, or being well-compensated. What we didn't like, and what my officers especially didn't like, is we felt like we were cut out of that process. We felt like, at no point during that discussion was any of our guys told, I wasn't given a heads-up, and I've been the Union Rep here for as long as you've been the mayor, and I know Jamie's been here longer, and Captain Ferrer's our, our newest one, but you know all of us, and we were never given a heads-up. So as we assume that everybody's getting a two percent raise, we come to find out last Friday, I get a call that that's not the case. And then, over the next few days, I get a thousand calls about it. So we don't fault that, and I understand parity, and we've talked about some of the parity that, that can be done, and, and the positives that it can be, but what we felt like, and the guys I work with were strong in this, is that we felt like that this was one, either someone in city administration, an elected official, dropped the ball and failed to accurately depict what the salary ordinance was going to be, or two, someone willfully failed to accurately depict what the salary ordinance was going to be. I don't believe it was a willful, but it's hard for me to explain that to my guys, when, when we see what happened, and we see the, to borrow from Donald Webb, the optics of it. It just didn't look good, and that's not good government. And I'm not here to berate you guys, but we can't, we can't go with a lack of communication like that. It's not good. It's not good for us as employees, it's not a good look for elected officials, and it doesn't help the citizens at all. 'Cause in the last week and a half, as we're dealing with this and trying to, to figure out what it means and what the changes are in this budget, what we're not doing, it, it takes the focus away from what we should be doing, which is fighting crime, which is trying to find a way to ensure that our property crime and our violent crime stays low, as we're currently surrounded by one of the ten most violent cities in the country. Everywhere you go, no matter which way you drive out of this city, you run into one of the ten most violent cities in the country. And we fight hard every day to make sure that doesn't bleed into our city. So, we need to find a way, as elected officials, as employee reps, and as administrators for our departments, to communicate better, 'cause obviously, there was a breakdown in communication here somewhere that we can't have anymore, especially during the budget process, or at any point. We need to, uh, we need to communicate better, we need to speak to each other. I know our chiefs have felt like, and I know our union reps, myself included, have felt like that we were not completely involved in this budget process, and at their points, we were just left out of it. And we've got things in our operational costs that we had concerns about, that we wanted to speak about, and we were never given that venue, is what we feel like. So, again, like I said, we will, we would never argue, uh, or request that you rescind anything that you've given a city employee, but in the future, we need to have a heads-up. You need to let us know. It's not fair to us or the citizens when what was indicated is not what, what took place. So the communication has to improve, and I think everybody here needs to take ownership of that and, and find ways to communicate better with the elected officials, with the employees, and with the administration heads. Finally, we do need to bring up that the pension base in the salary ordinance is off by about one percent. So I don't know what you guys need to do to amend that, but in the initial salary base, it was listed as fifty-seven, eight ninety-seven, and it should be the fifty-eight, four one three.
I'll be mending that.
Okay? All right, thanks.
(inaudible) question. As everybody here knows, I'm old and confused very easily.
Yes, ma'am.
But your guys were excited about the possibility of a two percent raise.
Yes, ma'am.
And these folks are asking for a thirty-four percent raise? Is, is that, if my understanding is correct?
Wha- what is your question, Pam?
Well, you were looking at two percent, they're looking at thirty-four percent.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Um, yeah, I would agree with Captain Ferrer there. You know, we, we have gotten raises, and I don't, I, I've looked at some of the numbers, and I think I've spoken to some of you about it, and I, and I've seen what it is. I, I know it says thirty-four percent, but I believe the ultimate raw number is eleven hundred dollars, is that the?
Thousand three.
Thousand three. Okay.
Okay.
You know?
I was just looking at the figures.
Right, I, I understand, I, you know, it's the, I don't like percentages, because sometimes percentages don't always- I don't like percentages, because sometimes percentages don't always tell the whole story. You can look at some of our crime rates from year to year, and it may look like it went up 50%, which sounds horrible in one category. And that may actually be one incident. It just went from having zero incidents to, or having one incident in one year to two incidents the next year. So, you can't always look at the percentages. Again, like I'll, I'll just reiterate that, from a union standpoint, we've supported all the increases that were in this budget for this year.
All right. Thank you.
Nathan, this'd be a good time for me to ask you. Who, who are you or who with the department is the money adder upper, excuse me? As far as seeing the differences in the, would that be the deputy chief back there? My question was, who within the department, not to linger on here, kind of adds up the monies to see how it's comparable to last year, this year? Which department might get more or less? Because I just want to thank them. That was all. That was really what it was about.
It was me this time.
Well, if it was you, I don't know if I can thank you, but...
I wasn't gonna accuse him of that.
I was just gonna say thank you for doing our job. So, that was it.
Is this a time to ask questions about, are questions about the discrepancy in the pay and the, the levels? Because I guess, why wasn't it not brought to our attention from the clerk treasurer, the first read?
I don't think that's for me. I think that's above my pay grade, so I'm gonna back and sit down.
Is there, is there anybody else who would like to speak?
Might be able to help clarify a couple of things for you on the pension base. The pension base is based upon the first-class salary of a firefighter or first-class master patrolman. What this budget does, it equalizes that first-class salary. It, what it means is a police officer or a firefighter who pensions out, who retires in 2017, has the same pension base. It equalizes. And that's our goal. It shows that this council is, is pro-public safety. It's on an equal level, and that's all we ask for. Fire department's not asking for parity. We could break down the number of hours worked. I can sit up here and tell you, the firefighters work 678 more hours a year than our police officers. I don't fault them. We, we love them, too. Greatly appreciate their work. But it's a fact of life that if you take the base salary, put on a 40-hour week, it's $28 an hour. If you put the firefighters on the same scale, we work 106 hours every two weeks. That's $21 an hour. We're not asking for $28 an hour. We're very happy. We just want our pension base the same. We want it equalized. And that's the intent of the budget. When you take a look at the salary ordinance, you can go through the master firefighter, the firefighter's second-year probationary. It continues through to the different pays for position pays. They're all equal. And that's our goal. That's what I think we should move forward as a fire department, and that's all we ask.
So, prior to this budget, were those, for the firefighter's second probationary firefighter, those were not, because now, on this budget, they're exactly the same?
The, on previous budgets, I have those with me.
Okay.
The master firefighter, we were below the police department.
Okay.
The second year was the same, and the probationary firefighter was below the probationary police officer.
Is that where the issue lies?
No, in this budget, it's, it's all even. And like I said, that master firefighter's change to equal out the pension base, so it's both the same on each side.
But just to get it clear, that's, and the police officers agree with those two?
You'll have to talk to them.
So, so, you, you agree that the numbers for the firefighter's second year, patrolman's second year, probationary firefighter, and the probationary patrolman, that, that those salaries are equal? Those are all the same? You're, you guys are okay with those numbers being the same? Because I understood it was just, we were just talking about the patrolman first class for pension base.
No, we don't have an issue. This is, see, this is where, this is where we don't want to be, where we're being pitted against the fire department. Like, I don't, I don't want to talk about how many hours we, we work and they work. That's not, that's not, and, and I don't want to, we could, me and Rob, we could stand up here. We're good friends, and we could go back and forth on this. That's not where we're at. What we're talking about, if you give them the same basis as us, good for them.
Okay.
Okay? Good for them. What we're talking about is the transparency of it. Okay? The fact that we weren't invited to the budget meetings.
Yes, you were. It was in an email.
I disagree. It was, it was sent in an email, but he, but the, but the... Yeah, he was, he was sending an email. You saw the email.
I seen the email.
With attached to it, but it wasn't as if they had to be present. They could bring their questions forward. Mark has brought his concerns, not only to me, but definitely to Liz, for the council. So, it's not that they didn't have an, an input in the budget process that way. But where you were going with it at is still that information wasn't equally shared with you. And I agree with you that as that was the position, it just came up recently, and, and one that I know as a councilperson, I apologize, you had to go through that, and you have to sit up at that podium today to explain it as well as you guys have done. Been very professional about it. Appreciate it.
But honestly, Maurice, I mean, Tom Hanna, Brad, they were all, and all of them pretty much declined. And I could, and the email I seen, Mark, had your name on it, and it came to me as well.
We communicated and communicated, so that wouldn't be the case. But I did want to make sure, yeah, the email was sent. One thing that I do suggest, we're not, this is probably a poor time to bring it up, but in the future, there are seven of us up here. And I think I've told many of, as far as the city. Best thing is, is talk to all seven of us. If we were the House of Representatives, and there was 200 or whatever it is, it might be hard. But with seven, I'll have, and Nathan does that, too. I know that you don't stop at me. You talk to everybody as much as you can, which I think is probably the best policy. But I don't want to take away from what you were getting ready to say, so.
I don't really remember everything. Let's see.
Well, you were pitting yourself against Rob, I think.
Right. No, I was trying, I was trying not to do that. I was trying not to do that. I think what we're trying to get at is, we don't, it's the whole transparency and the fact that we don't have a lot of input on our budget. And you guys, yes, our budget on paper, if you look at that bottom number, went up because of mandatory increases that you guys put in, a 2% raise, longevity, and you've added two more officers. But yet, if you look at what I care about, the operating budget, our operating budget went down $32,000. You cannot argue that. It was 289, 300 for last year, and this year, for, for 2017, it will be 257, 300. That's 32,000 even. What is forgotten is that we are running with 30 officers right now. You will be adding four officers next year. Two are in the pipeline right now. They'll be hopefully in November. And hopefully, we'll get these other two. We have interviews this week, and we'll get those along as well. So, our operating costs are going to go up. And I know you'll sit here and say, Maurice, do you really think we won't give you that money? And I know that you'll make an appropriation, but not before, not before the chief has to stand up here and, and be told, you didn't manage your budget. I can't believe we're having to appropriate this money again, and we'll give you the money. Even though, he has said numerous times, I need this amount in my budget, and it's not in there. But yet, our issue is not what the fire department's getting, but when I look, as a chief, when I look at the fire department budget, and I see that they're getting 3.25% more than my guys, and I see that their operating budget went up 9,000, and mine went down 32, I have issues with that. I have issues that I have to stand in front of my guys and say, sorry, guys, we didn't know anything about it. And I, I know standing in front of you now, there's probably not a whole lot you can do about it, because you've already published the budget. But the issue could have been resolved in June or July, since that's what you base my budget off of, those numbers. The percents from June and July, even though you don't know what's gonna happen the next six months, you base it off of June numbers. And so, we run on a, on a, and I know Rob does, too. It's a baseline budget. There's no fluff. There's no fluff. It's a bare-bones budget that we have to work with, 257,000.
So, how would you like to see it happen next year, Maurice?
Us to actually present a budget would be the first step. Give us the opportunity to prepare a budget based off of needs and what we think. I mean, I probably shouldn't say this, but there's often times where guys go, so what are you working on? I go, I don't really know. I don't, I don't have a whole lot to say anymore. We're department heads that, we're not given a whole lot of power to do anything except for a few, a few things on the road that we can do. But we don't have a lot of input anywhere else. And so, I'd like to be able to present a budget. And I can have guidelines. You can tell me how much money I get, and we can work with that. And I, then I can come back to you and tell you how much we need to operate. And if you say no, at least I had the opportunity to do that. I didn't have the opportunity this time. In fact, I didn't get any invites to any meetings. I didn't get any of the budget worksheets. It wasn't until I left Fall Festival Friday night, was sitting in my recliner at 10 o'clock at night. My wife's sitting right over there, and I thought, you know what? I'm gonna go through that budget and figure out why I didn't get those. That's where I came up with the numbers. And I didn't get past the fire department. So, I don't know what public works is getting. I only got to the fire department and thought, good grief. If, did, did, because we sat up here and heard that everyone was getting a 2%. Did nobody know that this was in there? That's an issue.
No. And I feel is left out of the budget process, I, I was not on the budget committee. I can honestly say I haven't received a call from anyone in the budget committee to explain to me what was discussed on the budget committee. So, I feel is left out. I've talked to certain people, and I have heard that in the past, every department, every budget, every councilperson met together at a roundtable, and they went department with, with budget, department with budget. And I believe that that would, I, I firmly believe I, the next budget year, I'm, I'm gonna push for it, and I hope that we can come, can get together as a group, and we can all be included on it.
I just want to make it clear. I don't want anything taken from the fire department. It's Rob's job to fight for his guys and to get every last dime he can get out of you. And I don't, I'm not mad at Rob for it. I just wish we would have had the opportunity to do it for my guys instead of, I don't, I don't know where the stuff that chief gave to people went, because it didn't end up in the budget. And so, my point is, is that we just want to be involved. Just want to be involved. And if you want to know the history on why the fire department was less than us about eight years ago, dispatch disappeared. It was presented to us, you can either have manpower or a raise. We took manpower, or raise, fire department took manpower. Myself and Karik Fitzgerald, who was the union rep at the time, agreed that we would delete parity from our contracts, so that we would never be put against them again. Whatever they got, they got. Whatever we got, we got. And here we are. In the last week, I've heard two things that I didn't think I'd hear for a long time. One is parity, and the second is third-class city. Because we don't, we don't work for a third-class city, and I, I get what that third class is. But my guys don't work in a third-class city, and, and you shouldn't label yourselves a third-class city. I mean, you limit yourself like that, but I've heard that twice in the past two weeks. And it's, it's crazy that we're back that far again. Anyway.
Just want to make a comment that the department heads were invited to a budget meeting. And I brought my issue up, that I was $32,000 short. I didn't ask for an increase. During that meeting, I was told to get it from other departments if I wanted an increase. Why would I want to get from another department? I'm not asking for an increase. The, Mr. Peters, he said the city was fine. He didn't need to draw from other departments. All I'm asking is for the operation budget from this year, the same as next year. That's it. The 2% is coming from the city administration and you guys. I appreciate that. But don't think that it wasn't asked and that it wasn't told that the operations budget was $32,000 short. It's just the fact that it was told, and it was given out to people.
Good evening, counsel. Paul Floyd, Beach Grove Firefighters Union President. I don't want to hold too much more time, because we've talked about this a lot. I agree with what the police have said. If there's a visibility issue or a communication issue, that's a big thing. And part of it, maybe Nathan and I need to talk more, maybe we all need to get together and talk more, whatever has to happen to let us all come up and feel good every year when it comes to budget time, to feel like maybe we didn't get everything we needed or everything we wanted, rather. But at the very least, we all got heard and all sat at the same table and discussed the same thing. That being said, I stand behind the police on this. And, you know, I thank you guys for your work, and I thank them for what they did, and that's all I had to say. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? If not, we'll move to general ordinance number 22, 2016. That's the salary ordinance. At this time, I'll defer to the council president.
Your honor, I'd like to make two amendments to this ordinance. And I'll have to make them separate, I believe. But the first amendment I'd like to make is that we clarify that 29 hours a week or 58 hours bi-weekly is considered part-time employment. And I'd like to make an amendment to that at this time.
There is a amendment on the floor to limit the part-time hours to 58 bi-weekly. I need a motion to approve.
Make that motion approved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
This, this is what we were talking about last meeting, where it says add, not to exceed the 58 hours.
We have one more motion from the council president?
I'd like to make a motion that the bailiff in our city court, that the minimum hours is three hours, and of course, that he, and that he be paid at time and a half of his rate. That the minimum would be three hours in the bailiff in the court.
Dan, is that accurate?
I thought it was two hours. It was going from three hours to two, but you're gonna get overtime pay.
The clerk is correct, because it, we're gonna do the two, but we're going time and a half. So, let's strike the three and make that a two. So, it'll be two hours and paid at the time and a half.
What page are you on, Bud?
I'm not on any page. I'm making the amendment to, and I don't actually have that page in front of me, I should say.
That's something Judge Wells had sent to me early on, and somewhere in the paperwork, it got missed. And so, I went to Bud and asked him if he would do that, because that's what the judge wanted.
The judge asked for it.
Okay. Could you kind of go through that just one more time? Exactly what is it we're amending or adding?
I believe we could talk about the, I think the current right now was three, but it was a regular rate. Is that correct? But I think what it's being changed to is two hours is the minimum now. If they go longer, it'd be different, but two-hour minimum, and it's paid at time and a half. Right.
Can I ask a question on this real quick? Scott, is that the understanding you have, too, that that's how he wanted to do that, was two hours at overtime, paid time and a half, versus a three-hour minimum of regular salary?
I wasn't at the last meeting. I haven't spoken to the judge about it. I can just tell you that right now, as it stands, it's three hours at $30 an hour. Right. So, I don't know what he wants to move it to, but right now, the minimum is three. And probably, to be consistent with the rest of our call-outs and minimums, because the court minimum show up is three hours, a call-out minimum is three hours. I would presume that three hours is probably what he's looking at. The rate of time and a half is something that maybe the judge has decided.
Okay. Maybe, can you tell me, just from your own personal experience, if you got two hours at time and a half, it would be more than the three hours at $30 an hour?
For my personal situation, yes, sir.
Okay, and that's what-
I don't know if that would be the same for every officer in our department.
Right, but that's what he requested. And so I just wanted to clarify that it would be a benefit to you. I think you and one other is pretty much the ones that do that.
Yeah, myself and Officer, Control Officer Hart, I believe has been doing most of the time this year.
So it's gonna be a minimum of three hours?
No, two hours at time and a half.
Oh, two, okay.
As opposed to-
I was just telling you, right now it's three, thirty. If he says it's two at time and a half, I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask the judge to make sure what his intent was.
We're, yeah, we're a little conflicting because I believe you did say two. And I think the mayor and I talked three, and I don't know if that's, we just mixed it up. But we, I think the point is, is for it to be more because, you know, your, your whole day coming out for two hours possibly is really why it's, why it's being considered to be paid more, was the point behind it.
At this point in time, I mean-
But we don't do anything to make it less.
... decide government, make your, you know, you guys, it's a amendment that you're making. So you guys can make the decision what you guys want to do now.
I think we ought to, I believe, I'm gonna make a motion that it be three hours at time and a half as far as the bailiff in the city court.
There's a motion on the floor. Need a second, please?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Okay, counsel, General Ordinance Number Twenty-Two, Two Thousand and Sixteen is up for approval on second reading only.
I would make a motion and we read by title only?
It's a motion by title only.
Can I ask to make an amendment now or should I wait till after we read the ordinance?
We'll do it on third reading.
Okay, okay.
There's a motion to read by title only. And we'll do it by individual vote, vote beginning on my left.
Title only?
Do we need a second, mayor?
Didn't-
I thought somebody seconded it.
Okay.
Title only.
Yeah, title only.
Title only.
Read in full.
Title only.
Title only.
It takes unanimous vote to read in full or to title only. So I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
Mayor, we read this. You can't, you don't have that decision.
No. I, I believe if the counselor wants it done and it, that's what it should be done. I would say that I'm not sure it's gonna make a whole lot of sense to everyone because there's nothing to compare it against. But I just wanted to make that point. That's all.
Okay. Can I bring something else up for a second? Craig just showed me the email from the judge and it says two hours.
It's two hours. Not three.
So you may want to amend it on third reading to-
I would leave it as it is.
Yeah, I'm with, I think unless somebody else wants to amend it, I'm not gonna amend it. I'll, if they want to on third, they can.
Okay.
But this time I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
Are we doing this by title or?
By reading full.
Okay. Ordinance Number Twenty-Two, Two Thousand and Sixteen is an ordinance fixing the biweekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana in the year 2017. Be it ordained by the common council for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana. Section one, that from and after the first day of the year 2017, the biweekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees of the city of Beach Grove be fixed as follows. Mayor from corporation, biweekly twelve ninety-six eighty-five, yearly thirty-three thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. Mayor from sewage, eleven hundred and five dollars and eight cents, yearly twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. Mayor's assistant, biweekly seventeen hundred and one dollars and sixty cents, yearly forty-four thousand two hundred and forty-one seventy-one. Clerk treasurer's office, clerk treasurer from corporation, biweekly thirteen hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-eight cents, yearly thirty-four thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars. Clerk treasurer from sewage, nine ninety-seven oh eight, yearly twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-four. Administrative assistant, H R clerk, twelve hundred and twenty-four forty-nine, yearly thirty-one thousand eight thirty-six thirty-seven. Deputy clerk, twelve twenty-four forty-nine, biweekly, yearly thirty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six thirty-seven. Office manager, twelve hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-nine cents, biweekly, yearly thirty-one thousand eight thirty-six thirty-seven. Assistant clerk, part-time, up to thirteen fifty per hour, not to exceed fifty-eight hours per pay. Assistant clerk, full-time, eleven hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixty-two cents, yearly twenty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Board of sanitation and public works and safety, board members, biweekly a hundred and five dollars, yearly two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Crossing guards, twenty-two fifty-five per hour. Crossing guards hired after, one wanted twenty-fourteen, fifteen fifty per hour. City of Beach Grove Common Council, council members, biweekly one seventy-three oh eight, yearly forty-five hundred. Department of Public Works, motor vehicle and highway, sewage. Director of Public Works, biweekly two thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven seventy-one, yearly seventy-three thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-seven cents. Billing clerk, one thousand seven hundred and three forty, yearly forty-four thousand two eighty-eight thirty-five. Sewage clerks, part-time, not to exceed fifty-eight hours per pay, up to thirteen fifty per hour. Public Works Secretary, part-time, not to exceed fifty-eight hours per pay, up to thirteen fifty an hour. Janitorial service, part-time, not to exceed fifty-eight hours, up to thirteen fifty per hour. Sanitary stormwater supervisor, biweekly seventeen hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-five cents, yearly forty-four thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-one cents. Sanitation M V H laborer, part-time, not to exceed fifty-eight hours, up to fourteen fifty per hour. Street commissioner, biweekly two thousand fourteen sixty-three, yearly fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and forty cents. Compliance positions, biweekly, not to exceed fifty-eight hours, per pay, up to fifteen fifty per hour. Mechanic, biweekly eighteen fifty-five ninety-three, yearly forty-eight thousand two fifty-four oh six. Commercial driver, biweekly seventeen seventy-six oh six, yearly forty-six thousand one seventy-seven fifty-three. Lead laborer, biweekly seventeen oh two ninety-five, yearly forty-four thousand two seventy-six seventy. Laborer, third year, biweekly fifteen thirty-three oh four, yearly thirty-nine thousand eight fifty-three oh three. Laborer, second year, fourteen fifty-three eighty-six, yearly thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars and thirty-six cents. Probationary laborer, first year, thirteen fifty-eight ten, biweekly, yearly thirty-five thousand three ten sixty. Department of Parks Director, biweekly twenty-four eighty-eight sixty-six, yearly sixty-four thousand seven oh five sixteen. Parks General Staff, part-time, not to exceed fifty-eight hours per pay, up to thirteen fifty per hour. Parks Janitorial Service, part-time, not to exceed fifty-eight hours, up to thirteen fifty per hour. Hornet Park Community Center Facility Special Events Coordinator, full-time, fourteen thirty-eight forty-six, yearly thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. Hornet Park General Staff, part-time, not to exceed fifty-eight hours per pay, up to thirteen fifty per hour. Senior Citizen Center Community Service Coordinator, biweekly fourteen eighteen ten, yearly thirty-six thousand eight seventy sixty-seven. Transportation Administrative Coordinator, one thousand eighty-two forty-three, biweekly, yearly twenty-eight thousand one forty-three twenty-nine. General Staff, part-time, not to exceed fifty-eight hours per pay, up to thirteen fifty per hour. For the following certification, commercial driver's license for bus, add, biweekly thirty-eight forty-six per pay, yearly nine hundred ninety-nine ninety-six. Fire Department, Master Firefighter, third year, biweekly twenty-two forty-six sixty-five, yearly fifty-eight thousand four thirteen thirty-two. Firefighter, second year, two thousand seventy-six oh one, biweekly, yearly fifty-three thousand nine seventy-six twenty-six. Probationary firefighter, eighteen twenty-five sixty-five, biweekly, yearly forty-seven thousand four sixty-six eighty-two. First-class firefighter for pension base only, add two thousand dollars to fifty-six thousand two forty-nine fifty-four. Fire Department Chief, biweekly eight sixty-five thirty-eight, yearly twenty-two thousand four ninety-nine eighty-eight. Operations Chief, six seventy-three oh eight, yearly seventeen thousand five hundred oh eight. Battalion Chief, three eighty-four sixty-two, biweekly, ten thousand and twelve cents, yearly. Captain, two hundred and thirty seventy-six, biweekly, yearly five thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine seventy-six. Lieutenant, biweekly one fifty-three eighty-five, yearly four thousand dollars and ten cents. E M S duty officer, fifty-seven sixty-nine, yearly fourteen ninety-nine ninety-four. Engineer, biweekly ninety-six fifteen, yearly twenty-four ninety-nine ninety. Applies to all members of the Fire Department with paramedic certification, not calculated in the base salary. Biweekly ninety-six fifteen, yearly twenty-four ninety-nine ninety. Applies to all members of the Fire Department with E M T certification, not calculated in the base salary. Twenty-eight eighty-five, biweekly, seven hundred and fifty dollars and ten cents. First year civilian paramedic, biweekly sixteen fifty-four oh eight, yearly forty-three thousand six dollars and sixteen cents. Second year civilian paramedic, biweekly eighteen fifty-nine thirty, yearly forty-eight thousand three forty-one seventy-two. Third year civilian paramedic, biweekly nineteen seventy-eight thirty-eight, yearly fifty-one thousand four thirty-seven ninety-three. First year civilian emergency medical technician, biweekly fourteen forty-six twelve, yearly thirty-seven thousand five ninety-nine twelve. Second year civilian medical technician, sixteen fifty-four oh eight, biweekly, yearly forty-three thousand six dollars and sixteen cents. Third year civilian medical technician, biweekly sixteen eighty-five fifty-five, yearly forty-three thousand eight twenty-four thirty. Police Department, Master Patrolman, third year, biweekly twenty-two forty-six sixty-five, yearly fifty-eight thousand four thirteen thirty-two. Patrolman, second year, two thousand seventy-six and a penny, biweekly, yearly fifty-three thousand nine seventy-six twenty-six. Probationary patrolman, first year, biweekly eighteen twenty-five sixty-five, yearly forty-seven thousand four sixty-six eighty-two. Patrolman, first class for pension base only, add two thousand dollars to fifty-seven thousand eight ninety-seven eighty-one. For the following positions, add, chief, biweekly eight sixty-five thirty-eight, yearly twenty-two four ninety-nine ninety-eight. Deputy chief, six seventy-three oh eight, yearly seventeen thousand five hundred and eight cents. Major of operations, four hundred and eighty seventy-seven, biweekly, yearly twelve thousand five hundred and two cents, yearly. Major, three hundred and eighty-four sixty-two, biweekly, yearly ten thousand dollars and twelve cents, yearly. Captain, two hundred and thirty seventy-seven, biweekly, yearly six thousand dollars and two cents. Lieutenant, biweekly one fifty-three eighty-five, yearly four thousand dollars and ten cents. Sergeant, ninety-six fifteen, biweekly, twenty-four ninety-nine ninety, yearly. Graduate of the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy, one fifteen thirty-eight, biweekly, three thousand, yearly. Detective, fifty-seven sixty-nine, biweekly, yearly fourteen ninety-nine ninety-four. Civilian General Staff, chief's assistant, biweekly seventeen oh three thirty-six, yearly forty-four thousand two ninety-five oh three. Animal Control Officer, sixteen ninety seventy-nine, yearly forty-three thousand nine sixty sixty-one. Receptionist, fourteen, or excuse me, receptionist thirteen forty-six thirty-four, yearly thirty-five thousand four dollars and eighty-one cents. Detective Secretary, part-time, up to fourteen forty-eight per hour, not to exceed fifty-eight hours. Police Lobby civilian, part-time, not to exceed fifty-eight hours per pay, up to fifteen dollars per hour. Police Lobby Police Officer, part-time, up to twenty dollars an hour, not to exceed fifty-eight hours per pay. City Court, biweekly, the judge seventeen thirty-two fifty, yearly forty-five thousand forty-five dollars. Court Clerk, full-time, biweekly seventeen twenty sixty-seven, yearly forty-five thousand six thirty-two oh five. Court Clerk, part-time, not to exceed fifty-eight hours per pay, up to thirteen fifty per hour. Section two, educational incentive pay governed by ordinance thirty-seven point one-one, educational incentive pay. Section three, longevity benefit. Each full-time employee of the city of Beach Grove shall receive a longevity increment of one hundred dollars per year at the beginning of the following year after their hire with the city of Beach Grove as of January first, two thousand and seventeen. This benefit only applies to employees most current employment with the city. Employees that resign or leave employment with the city and return to employment with the city cannot receive this benefit based on past employment history. This benefit will be calculated from the most recent hire date. Elected officials are not eligible for this benefit. This benefit is only available to full-time employees. Section four, clothing allotment benefit. Each member of the Fire and Police Department shall receive a clothing allotment of eight hundred dollars per year and two installments of four hundred dollars each. The payments shall be made with first payroll of June and December or before. The Board of Public Works and Safety shall have the discretion to annually establish and modify the amount of the benefit. Civilian employees of the Police Department and other departments within a city are not eligible for this benefit. Probationary employees of the Fire and Police Departments are not eligible for this benefit as well. Employees of the Department of Public Works shall have their clothing supplied to them by the city of Beach Grove. Section five, Fire Department Duty Pay Day. The city of Beach Grove shall maintain its current policy of reimbursing fourteen dollars per duty day meal allowance for each on-duty member of the Beach Grove Fire Department. Any changes to this policy during the term of this agreement shall be submitted to the Beach Grove Professional Firefighter Association for review and comment prior to implementation. This ordinance Number Twenty-Two, Two Thousand and Sixteen supersedes any previous ordinance or employee handbooks written by the city of Beach Grove. The rates for wages shown in this ordinance Number Twenty-Two, Two Thousand and Sixteen are for positions listed and are for the maximum biweekly rates. The biweekly rates are subject to approval by the Department of Local Government Finance of a levy and tax rate sufficient to fund them. This ordinance Number Twenty-Two, Two Thousand and Sixteen will take effect January first, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you. I just think it's important that the citizens who took their time to be here today should, I think they're good that they hear these salaries.
Yes, Chris.
On the judge and the court clerk, full-time, the biweekly figures, her figure is less than his, yet her yearly figure is more. And I calculated that out. At that biweekly rate, her figure should be forty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-two cents. I don't know which of the two is accurate. Whether it's her biweekly or whether it's that yearly amount.
Well, I would suggest that the council amend this to the higher number because this order only says we can pay up to this. That doesn't mean we have to pay this. So before we vote on Second Amendment, Chris, I would recommend that you amend that to the higher figure, higher base salary.
Okay. Let me calculate from this yearly amount, which is the higher of the two, oh, well, which is the higher, what it would be for the biweekly. All right, that would be, I would make an amendment to change her biweekly pay to one thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and eight cents, which would, other than a few pennies, let me do that. Which would, a few, other than a few pennies, let me do that, seventeen fifty-five, oh eight. That would make her yearly salary forty-five, six thirty-two, oh eight.
There is an amendment.
Just three cents more. You have to kind of do it that way to get the biweekly.
There's amendment to raise the court clerk's biweekly salary to one thousand, seven fifty-five point oh eight, biweekly, and the total would be forty-five thousand, six thirty-two, oh eight. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's a motion. I ask for a second.
A second.
There's been a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
When can I ask to amend to separate?
When we have third reading. General ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand and sixteen is up for approval on second reading only with the three amendments. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will carry it to third and final reading this evening. General ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand and sixteen is up for approval on third and final reading. I will defer to the council president for at least three amendments.
I know that, Dave, you prepared to make an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I want to amend the pension base. It reads fifty-eight thousand, four thirteen, thirty-two. And I'd like to add two thousand, that makes it sixty thousand, four thirteen, thirty-two for third year and patrolman and third-year fireman.
I understood that the equal, the number should equal the master firefighter, third year, the pension-based. I mean, I can defer to the chiefs, but I thought that's what they, that that should equal. It should be the same, it should e-
The two thousand already included.
Plus, plus two.
Plus two thousand?
Plus two.
Okay. Okay.
The ordinance should reflect that the, the pension base is the equivalent of the third-year police officer plus twenty years longevity. So there is a, what is your motion, Dave?
Okay, so it should be fifty-eight thousand, four thirty, four thirteen, thirty-two. And that includes the two thousand. No. So, should be the-
Two thousand.
Which would make it sixty thousand.
Yeah.
You just stick to the word add.
Okay. That's all I want to do.
Not included but add.
Not included but add.
Isn't that the way it's written now?
And what are you saying it should be, Mark?
It should be fifty-eight thousand, four thirteen, thirty-two.
That's a little different than what I'm, I'm, I'm.
That's what I've got up here on the master patrolman. It's fifty-eight, four thirteen, thirty-two. Okay, I see what you're saying. And same way with fire department, it should be the fifty-eight, four thirteen, thirty-two also.
Right.
Okay, for pension base only purposes.
Counselor Davison is, Harrison, I'm sorry.
Give me a break.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Anthony.
I'll just move out to Franklin Township.
Ouch.
Dave has amended the pension base. I'll ask for a second.
That's the pension base for both the fire and the police.
Correct.
I'll, I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
And we're gonna have another amendment.
Oh, yes. Looking over this budget and being all, trying to be equal here, I noticed that the Hornet Park Community Coordinator is getting thirty-seven, four hundred. And then I look at the deputy clerk, only getting thirty-one, eight, thirty-six, thirty-seven.
What page are you on, Ed?
Well, be page three for the Hornet Community, and then coming back to page one, deputy clerk. Uh, in all fairness, I would say that should be brought up as equal of thirty-seven, four hundred, not to exceed thirty-seven, four hundred. And Dan, I, like, before that, I want to make sure that there's money in your budget for that.
Yes, there is.
So what is, counselor, what's your motion?
My motion would be to change the deputy clerk, um, yearly to thirty-four, four hundred, not to exceed thirty-seven, four hundred.
Thirty-seven.
Are we sure of that amount, or?
Yeah. Yeah.
You wanna, I gotta, just want to see for a minute. What is, I've got an amount here, is this? Okay. I have nothing.
Ed, yours was thirty-seven thousand, is that right?
Yeah, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred.
The deputy clerk raised to thirty-seven thousand, four hundred. That's your, uh, motion.
That's my motion.
Need a second, please.
That's a pretty big percentage.
Can we ask, uh, why we're doing this?
Yeah.
Well, looking at, we're, been all the way through our employee manual, uh, and all the budgets, and been talking about fairness to all the employees, looking from the deputy clerk position, uh, and then the Hornet, uh, Community Center Coordinator, full-time, that should be balanced the same.
So those are-
You got a first-year employee-
Yeah.
-making more than a third-year employee, that, whose responsibility is probably greater than the one that's the one-year employee.
So who decides that responsibility is greater?
I'm just, I'm just talking about fairness of first year to third year for one.
Before we go forward, I know that Ed made a motion, so even to go any, I'll go ahead and second it, so at least you have a second to the motion. Without that, you know, since talking further about it, so I would second it.
And you say this is covered by the budget, then?
Yes, there's money in-
And this is your, this is your employee, you good with that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Further comments from, uh, board members?
I just think that's kind of odd to bring that up at this time, where there's been no discussion on it before.
I just noticed it.
So I, so, that's just another one of those transparency things, I suppose.
Well, there's gonna be, things happen here tonight that won't be transparent, they're gonna be live and in color, I guess, and-
So you're deciding, we're deciding that this employee's responsibilities are more than this rep, do you know the job description? Do we know their job descriptions side by side?
I know what the employee in my office is.
But do you have the job description of the other employee?
Well, I can just tell you this, it went from a part-time position and to a forty-hour position, so.
Well, that's not really a job description.
No, I don't have her job description. I would say the park director's got it.
Okay.
Further comments from council members? There's a motion to increase the salary, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Passes, uh, six to one. That is all of the amendments that I aware of. General ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand and sixteen is up for approval on third and final reading.
Can I make an amendment?
Oh, yep, go ahead, make an amendment.
Well, I appreciate all the citizens' comments tonight, and I ran for office to give back to the citizen, city, not to take from. And I think this ordinance, the way it's set up, to have us being forced to vote against the employees raises, which I would say, I would prefer giving the employees a bonus other than taking a raise. I think that's just totally unfair, so I would like to amend, separate the ordinance so we could vote on separate for elected, appointed official salaries and vote separate for employee. That's the right thing to do, it's the ethical thing to do, it's the honest thing to do, and it's a transparent thing to do, to separate the two ordinances.
There is a motion on the floor to amend a general ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand and sixteen, on third reading, to separate the salary ordinance, appointed versus-
Elected, appointed versus sal, versus employees.
There's a motion, I ask for a second.
That's not gonna change any money, though, right?
No, it's not gonna change any money.
We're just, we're just separating.
We're separating the ordinances.
Well, in five years, it's never been that way, and now because elected officials are taking a raise, you, you don't want that? How long's it been since you know it's been this way?
Uh, at least nine years.
Well, I do understand that-
Let me say something, Liz. Three years ago, we voted to give the elected officials, we were putting in the ordinance for elected officials, a small raise. I don't know what percent it was. And it was taken out. It wasn't, it was amended, whatever, it was taken out. And I'll say this, I voted no for that every time. And if the employees think I voted no for them, they're wrong. But I voted no for it because I thought the elected officials at that time should have had a raise. And I say it stays the way it is.
Well, that's yours, and this is mine.
That's fine.
I feel, I feel like you're making a council person choose between employees. Now, I have, I have, uh, residents here that I know that are living on a very tight budget, and you, we all know that we're gonna be voting for a utilities raise, so.
I don't know that. I know there may be one.
Okay, there may be one, okay. Well, I would like, I would ask your, I would ask you, I would plead with you to separate them.
Only thing I will say is what Liz asked for and, and, is something that had been done years ago, it's not like it's never, it's not like it's been made up.
Right.
But, uh, I don't know the reason why, I mean, recently, in most cities usually just vote on them all together, I don't know why that changed, but-
I do know why.
I just wanted to speak that what you're saying is something that has been done before, um, just in your benefit. I'm, I'm not, of course, going to second.
I do know why it changed. I called cities and towns, and five years ago, there was a state law that when elected officials, appointed officials got a raise, it had to go public in a newspaper. So they decided that that amount of money was just too much of a stress on the city, so they changed the law and said that it no longer had to be published a month in a, ahead of time, because before, if an elected, uh, and appointed officials got a raise, it had to be published thirty days prior to the read. So they changed that law, and I still think that, uh, the way we are, I think that, uh, there's no reason why I can't ask to have those separated, for all the right reasons.
Okay, waiting on a second for, uh, Counselor Lamping's amendment. If there's no second, the, uh, motion fails. We'll proceed to the reading of general ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand and sixteen, on third reading.
I'll make a motion to read it by title only.
I'll second title only.
We will vote individually, beginning with my left.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
Title only.
This time, I'll ask the clerk to read into the record, general ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand and sixteen, by title only.
Ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-sixteen is a salary ordinance fixing the biweekly rate for appointed and elected officials and employees for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana, in the year twenty-seventeen. Be it ordained by the common council for the city of Beach Grove, Indiana.
Thank you. This time, uh, general ordinance number twenty-two, two thousand and sixteen is up for approval on third and final reading with the three amendments.
Make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion to approve, a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Before we vote, I just wanted to make a comment on what Liz was trying to do, I think, was to make sure that the employees, that she stood behind them.
I think they know.
I wanted to just make sure.
I think they know, that I believe that their raises are, yeah, are good.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure, I think that's why you were trying to do that. I have nothing.
Their raises are good with me.
I have a motion to approve, general ordinance number twenty-two, on third reading, and we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
Uh, the motion, or the ordinance passes five to two. Please sign your vote.
Uh, Your Honor, I made a, a promise to the FOP I didn't keep, that won't make a difference in the vote, and you're aware of it, um, on the, within the salary. One of the things the police department would like to see, and you're already aware of it, that's something can be, not be determined tonight because of the budget, but that was, uh, to make sure that certification pay was equal, and I know that, uh, that's something that can come later, but I wanted to make sure, and I just mentioned it, so that it was on record, that that was brought up and that, uh, was something that being looked at, and I, I, of course, is, and I know the mayor as well, feels that was a fair thing to bring up, and it might make sense to police, maybe no one else, it's just a, uh, it's a difference of two hundred and fifty dollars per officer. That's something I know that, talking to the mayor, they'll be dealt with in contract and how that will go forward, but I just wanted to make mention because we do want clarity and we want fairness, and it goes both ways.
All right, so, okay.
Okay. I will take it under advisement. Uh, general ordinance number twenty-three, which is the budget, operating budget for two thousand and seventeen, is up for approval on second reading only. At this time, I will defer to the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
You want him to read the whole, or?
It's only one page.
One page.
Be it, ordinance number twenty-three. Be it ordained, resolved by the Beach Grove Common Council that for the expenses of Beach Grove Civil City for the year ending December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beach Grove Civil City, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effect and after its passage and approved by the Beach Grove Common Council. Name of adopting entity, Beach Grove Common Council. Type of adopting entity, fiscal body, common council and mayor. Date of adoption, nine twenty-six, twenty sixteen. Fund, The Rainy Day. Adopted budget, zero. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. General fund, adopted budget, eight million, five hundred, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Adopted tax levy, six million, three hundred thousand. Adopted tax rate, one point ninety-one, oh seven. Debt service, adopted budget, two hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and nineteen dollars. Adopted tax levy, two hundred and twenty thousand. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero six six seven. Fire pension, adopted budget, three hundred and sixty thousand. Adopted tax levy, sixty-six thousand. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero two oh oh. Police pension, adopted budget, six hundred and three thousand. Adopted tax levy, eighty-seven thousand. Adopted tax rate, zero point zero two six four. Local roads and streets, adopted budget, five hundred and thirty thousand. Adopted tax levy, zero, and adopted- Adopted tax levy, zero, and adopted tax rate, zero. Motor vehicle highway, adopted budget, $964,080. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Continuing education, adopted budget, $30,000. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Park non-reverting capital, adopted budget, $10,000. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Adopted budget, $11,241,486. Adopted tax levy, $6,673,000. Adopted tax rate, 2.0238. Home rule runs funds, Public Safety LOAT, zero. LOAT Special Distribution, zero. Restricted Rainy Day Fund, zero. Adopted budget for that classification, zero.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 23, 2016, is up for approval on second reading only. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, and motion to second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. General Ordinance Number 23 is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. This time, I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
Ordinance Number 23, be it ordained, resolved by the Beech Grove Common Council that for the expenses of Beech Grove Civil City for the year ending December 31, 2017, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of the several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Beech Grove Civil City, the property tax levies and property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approved by the Beech Grove Common Council. Name of adopting entity, fiscal body, Beech Grove Common Council. Type of adopt, adopting entity, fiscal body, common council and mayor. Date of adoption, 9/26/2016. The funds, Rainy Day, adopted budget, zero. Adopted tax levy, zero, and adopted tax rate, zero. General fund, $8,525,787 is the adopted budget. Adopted tax levy, $6,300,000. Adopted tax rate, 1.9107. Debt service, adopted budget, $218,619. Adopted tax levy, $220,000. Adopted tax rate, 0.067. Fire pension, $360,000 is the adopted budget. The adopted tax levy is $66,000. Adopted tax rate, 0.0200. Police pension, adopted budget, $603,000. Adopted tax levy, $87,000. Adopted tax rate, 0.0264. Local roads and streets, adopted budget, $530,000. Adopted tax levy is zero, and adopted tax rate is zero. Motor vehicle highway, adopted budget, $964,080. Adopted tax levy, zero. Adopted tax rate, zero. Continuing education, $30,000, the adopted budget, zero tax levy and zero tax rate. Park non-reverting capital, $10,000. Adopted tax levy is zero. Adopted tax rate is zero. The overall budget is $11,241,486. The adopted tax levy is $6,673,000. Adopted tax rate is 2.0238. Home rule funds, the Public Safety LOAT is zero. LOAT Special Distribution, zero. Restricted Rainy Day Funds, zero.
Thank you, Dan. General Ordinance Number 23, 2016, is up for approval on third and final reading this evening. At this time, I will ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve, and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The ordinance passes, please register your vote.
So, we have a question.
Yeah, Counselor, maybe we'd ask the city attorney, there's two general ordinances, 22 here.
There's two on all these, Chris.
Are there?
So, which one?
One we keep in our files, one I sent to the DLGF.
Oh, okay, so we do need to sign both of them?
Yes.
And that's, okay.
They're both clearly labeled, whether it's ordinance 22, 23, or 24.
Well, sometimes clarity is a little murky.
General Ordinance Number 24, 2016, an additional appropriation pursuant to the Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project is up for approval this evening on second reading. This time, I will defer to the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
Ordinance Number 24, 2016, whereas it has been determined that is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, be it ordained by the Beech Grove City Council of Beech Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds, named and for the purpose specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Fund name, general fund. The other services and charges, capital outlays, amount requested, $75,000. Amount approved by fiscal body, $75,000. Capital outlays, $153,211 is the amount requested, amount approved by the fiscal body, $153,211. Total for the general fund, $228,211 is the amount requested, amount approved by fiscal body, $228,211. Fund name, Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project. Capital outlays, $153,211 is the amount requested, amount approved by fiscal body, $153,211. Total for Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project Fund, $153,211. Amount approved by the fiscal body, $153,211. Whereas, the Beech Grove City Council desires to execute an MPO grant for Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project and provide funding and cash flow for the same, now therefore, be it further ordained by the Beech Grove City Council that a new fund is established for the administration of said grant. Be it further ordained by the Beech Grove City Council that the above general fund capital outlay additional appropriation amount is to be transferred to the new grant fund adopted this 26th day of September, 2016.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 24 is up for approval on second reading this evening. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion, Mayor.
Second.
Motion made, and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. General Ordinance Number 24, 2016, that's additional appropriation grant fund ordinance is up for third, approval on third and final reading this evening. At this time, I'll defer to the clerk to read the, uh, ordinance into the record, please.
Ordinance Number 24, 2016, whereas it has been determined that is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget, now therefore, be it ordained by the Beech Grove City Council of Beech Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds, named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. The fund name is the general. The other services and charges, $75,000 is requested, amount approved by fiscal body, $75,000. Capital outlays, amount requested, $153,211. Amount approved by fiscal body, $153,211. Total for the general fund, amount requested, $228,211. Amount approved by fiscal body, $228,211. Fund name, Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project. Capital outlays, $153,211 is requested, $153,211 is the amount approved by fiscal body. Total for Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project Fund, $153,211 requested, $153,211 is approved by the fiscal body. Whereas, the Beech Grove City Council desires to execute an MPO grant for the Churchman Avenue Sidewalk Project and provide funding and cash flow for the same, now therefore, be it further ordained by the Beech Grove City Council that a new fund is established for the administration of said grant. Be it further ordained by the Beech Grove City Council that the above general fund capital outlay additional appropriation amount is to be transferred to the new grant fund adopted this 26th day of September, 2016.
Thank you. Before we go to, uh, a vote on third reading, I do want to thank, uh, the clerk's office. I want to thank Craig. There's been a lot of legal review throughout the past two or three years. I'd like to thank the RDC for their participation in it as well, uh, and also want to thank Manny Hersigat Lewis and Capps for his work in this as well, and the MPO. We're almost done, this is one of the last steps, and, uh, NDOT will award the bid sometime, uh, after the first of the year, and then our only role will be to pay the invoice that NDOT sends us. So, uh, uh, this is a nice improvement for the city, and we look forward to it, uh, taking place. General Ordinance Number 24, 2016, is up for approval on third and final reading. This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. That concludes unfinished business, carried over from the previous meeting. Under new business, we have one item. Resolution Number 13, 2016, is a statement of objection, appealing action of tax adjustment board or county auditor in accordance with Indiana Code 6-1.1-17-15. And I'll defer to the clerk for explanation.
Okay, what this actually is, we've done this in all past years, and let's say if we send this to the newspaper previously, and we had a tax rate of 0.2, and they put 2.0, it is a big difference. So this here states whatever we said it was originally is what they stick to, and we're not held to that 2.0 if it was incorrectly published like that.
Thank you. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution into the record, please.
Resolution Number 13, 2016, statement of objection, appealing action of tax adjustment board or county auditor in accordance with IC 6-1.1-17-15. Whereas, the city of Beech Grove, Marion County, Indiana, objects to the tax adjustment board or county auditor fixing any tax rate or levy different from the amounts fixed by the city of Beech Grove, Marion County, now therefore be it resolved by the legislative body of the city of Beech Grove, Marion County, Indiana, that this statement be filed with the Department of Local Government Finance as provided in IC 6-1.1-17-15 in order to restore the tax rates and levies. Be it further resolved that this resolution supersedes any previous resolutions regarding the same, duly adopted this 26th of September, 2016.
Thank you. The floor is open for questions or comments. If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 13, 2016.
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3.
I'll second, Mayor.
Been a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please register your vote. Counsel, that concludes new business this evening. Uh, we will meet again next Monday at 7:00 PM in these chambers for, uh, to conduct normal business. Please bring your personnel manual binder with you. At this time, we'll ask for couns, uh, council comments. Tonight will begin on my far right, Kevin.
I just want to thank everybody for coming. That's all I got.
Uh, same thing here. It's a long process, thank you all for coming. That's all I have.
Well, I ran for office, and I asked the citizens of District One to vote for me because I am a public servant, I wanted to give back to the community, not take from the community. I rejected the pay raise because I do not want to weaken our budget, weaken our budget potential to serve the community as a whole. We're under contractual agreement for the Greenway, which is in progress, and we're going to have to ask for additional appropriations or, next year to, to meet those, that contractual agreement. We do have an anticipated utility rate, sewer rates, and I have articles from the Indianapolis Star, sewer rates went up in August, they're going to come, we will be voting to raise these rates. IPL seeks rate hikes, there's a Indianapolis Business Journal to clean up the Petersburg plant, so, um, my citizens, the residents that I serve, that I, uh, asked to vote for me in District One, are living on the margins, many of them paycheck to paycheck, I am not going to ask them to take, I'm not going to ask them to give me any more of my, of their money, so I will find a way to give back. I'll find a way to give back, and, um, I promise, and I'll do that.
Uh, thank you, people, for coming tonight, uh, like everyone says, it's a long process. I appreciate all the opinions and concerns. I appreciate all the opinions and concerns, good and bad. That's what makes the process work. So, thank you.
Dave?
Thank everybody for coming. Some of the people that were here left and I was really wanting to direct some comments towards them, but thank everybody that spoke tonight on the ordinance. Couple of comments that were made that I wanted to at least address, but one was that the mayor's job is a part-time job and that's about a joke. Maybe Mayor Delk was a full-time mayor, I don't know, I can't speak for him, but this mayor puts in forty-plus hours every week and so does the clerk. These two people brought this city back from hell as far as I'm concerned. You can look at it any way you want. Dennis didn't particularly want a raise, but I think we'd, if he even vetoed it, we'd have overrode it because why would I want to wait till 2020? As one person said, to give two percent for three years and then in 2020, give these guys the rate. Well, who the hell am I going to give the raise to? People I don't even know? Why shouldn't these two people be rewarded? They're the ones that done the job. And as far as Ed and I go, we sit on the council, I enjoyed every minute of it. I didn't do it for the money either, but I know that the time I put in is more than one meeting a month and we're still, the city, and Maurice, I liked your comment about a second race, second-class city, because you know what? If it was, I'd be with Lawrence, I'd be making fourteen thousand a year instead of But we are still one of the lowest-paid councils in this state and the mayor and the clerk's office are still one of the lowest-paid in the state. And if that's, and there was also a comment made on Facebook, I gotta get this off my chest. There's a comments made on Facebook. I will never say anything the mayor told me on Facebook. If he wants to get out and say it, that's his business. If the clerk wants to say it, that's their business. I did the Facebook thing and I appreciate the people that stood up on Facebook for the council. There was comments made about, oh, the council got a raise in oh-five. They heard it was, oh, I got oh-three, oh-four and oh-five and the council has made this same rate for thirty years. I don't know how to prove it to people, but here's one. I knew several council members back in the nineties. I knew several people back in the eighties that were on the council. But moving on with that, I just think it's time that Beach Grove, and one other thing, the comment was made on Facebook about the decrease, and I think it was made tonight, about six percent less salary. Well, you know what? I pulled those other cities, they have a family base rate pay and whatever and Beach Grove is right there with everybody else as far as third-class cities. No, do you get in with the Greenwood's and Lawrence or Carmel? Well, no, I don't think so. But every third-class city I seen, our pay scale here in this city, and actually, we had some people that were made two hundred and fifty thousand and above and some of those cities didn't even have those people. I rest my case. Thank you for coming.
Jim?
I'd just like to thank everybody for the comments and again, stand positive for the budget and it's been interesting and I appreciate all your comments.
I do want to thank everybody for being here, however they spoke. You know, I was on the council four years ago and the four years I wasn't on the council, I didn't come up here one time and give my opinion. And I kind of sit here and I watch people as they do that and it, you know, it's taking the extra effort. I have a great respect through a lot of things with our police, fire, our public works gets forgotten. Maybe we can put a truck up for sale to, or something for them and take their money or whatever. And I say that jokingly because they seem to get forgotten and I know the mayor doesn't. The mayor will put an article out every once in a while reminding us and when it snows. But getting back to the police and fire, their professionalism in handling some issues has impressed me. They're, I'm going from the union folks of always how professional and how they get up. If any of the employees of the police or fire department do not think they're union people are not standing up for them, well, you're wrong. The phone calls can be tougher than the podium and so I, a lot of respect there. You know, police officers, firefighters, I don't know how you pay what you're worth. We can't do that. But one thing I want to talk about just real quickly is leadership and responsibility. Police chief, fire chief, supervisors, police, fire, whatever, and their assistants, they go home at night with the responsibility of what goes on with their guys, what goes on in the street and it doesn't stop there, the mayor takes it. Now, I said a long time ago that, I was telling Dan the other day, the first mayor someone told me made a chicken back in nineteen oh-six and probably made two hundred after that and five hundred and six hundred and who knows? Eventually, they make it. But the responsibility, this isn't Little League, which I'm a proud involver in, but everyone up here I know has given their time in those organizations, whether they're church or Little League or so forth. This is about being accountable. Now, as far as the council raise, give or take it, I don't know how much that really means to really everybody there. I didn't vote on a raise for any of these guys or even the mayor or the clerk. I voted because our budget has to be fiscally strong in all areas. Some areas, it's not. I thought about it tonight real carefully and not every area is, but we want to try. It's about keeping ourselves fiscally responsible. We can keep putting things behind and behind and behind. Now, the mayor himself would have rather not even had a raise. That's because that's the last thing he thought about when he ran for mayor and the clerk took a huge cut to be clerk. But the point is, it's not about them, it's about the responsibility that's on their shoulders. It's easy even for me to be a Monday morning quarterbacker and I have been, but to put that responsibility every time and to go out there to do their jobs, the responsibility of all the money, responsibility of all the leadership and the mayor's looking at his watch, I'm actually saying good things about you, mayor, so give me a minute here. But it is about responsibility. Someone said about getting good candidates. Well, I never thought of that. I don't know if we ever get good candidates, bad candidates or in-between, that's up to the people. They get to make that choice on whatever we tell them, I guess, and judge whatever we do up here. So, I don't know if it's about that. It's not about raising, not about your sewer rate. Your sewer rate's totally different. This budget isn't based upon the sewer rate of the future, I don't know what that'll be. If it goes up, it goes up because we got to pay somebody else the bill. Now, we got a choice, we can underfund it and that will rob from the police and the fire and the public works and all the others. So, I kind of can end a little on that. These things aren't about those. One doesn't mess with the other in this budget. The budget funds itself. Another thing I ask about taking money from the people, this budget doesn't go out and raise taxes. I've known schools and other cities that have went above the tax cap that was passed years ago that asked for more money that you have to pay, but this mayor, this clerk and the council that passed in this one has never went to the public to ask for more tax money. But believe me, others have all through this state and even within our own entity. They probably maybe needed it, they set their case. I just want to say that what happens here today is not a tax raise, your tax bill's going to be the same. The question is, is how to make, I think, this budget as strong as we can in every area. I'll say this in final, Mayor Koch said one day, anybody knows him, he's a New York mayor, great liberal, I'm sure that some of you probably follow him, but he did say that one time when your budget is weak in a particular area, you failed the responsibility that might get you down the road. So, we don't want weak areas. And I just want to say, and finally, the police and fire, you guys, you guys showed the citizens of Beach Grove what you're about tonight, whether you agree or unhappy or your communication wasn't right. You guys showed it and I'm glad you had a chance to come up here and say it. And with that, your honor, that's it?
All right, thank you. A motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
The meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-nine PM. Thank you.